Let's begin the business meeting with a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. Counselors, any announcements?
I have one.
Areway.
The Commissions, the Commissioners in CANS Food and Fund Drive, an annual partnership between the Commissioners of the Revenue Association of Virginia and the Virginia Federation of Food Banks, will span statewide once again throughout the month of August. Commissioners of the Revenue across the Commonwealth will take on the fight against food insecurity. Now, in its fourth year, the Commissioners in CANS Food and Fund Drive is a month-long competition for Commissioners of Revenue Offices to join together to raise food and funds for their local food banks throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. Offices compete to collect the most food and funds during a time of the year when resources are in short supply and the need remains great. This year, the Charlottesville Commissioner of the Revenue's Office, with a huge assist from the Charlottesville Fire Department, plans to outraise our colleagues from around the state. "We are honored to participate yet again in such a worthwhile cause, and we appreciate the assistance of Chief Smith and the CFD and Chief Durett and the CPD with collections and helping spread the word," said Todd Divers, Charlottesville Commissioner of the Revenue. Drop-off locations outside Charlottesville City Hall, main entrance, downtown Mall Side, Ridge Street Fire Station, Fontaine Fire Station, 250 Bypass Fire Station, Charlottesville Police Department. Online giving, you can do that at www.brafb.org/commissioners. Every $1 donated helps provide enough food for four meals. So that's exciting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there another announcement?
I do. This is for the CHAP program, the Charlottesville Homeowner Assistance Program. In an effort to promote and preserve homeownership, the Charlottesville City Council offers grants of assistance to qualifying low and moderate income homeowners. These grants are intended to assist qualifying recipients with the ongoing cost of homeownership. The application period for this program runs July 1st through September 1st. You may qualify for a grant of $1,000, $1,500, $2,000, or $2,500, depending on your household adjusted gross income. Qualifications: applicant must be a legal owner and occupant of the residential property as of January 1st of the current year. Applicant spouse and co-owners residing in the home cannot own any other real estate. The current year assessed value on the applicant's residential property is $420,000 or less. Applicant's household income using the IRS federal adjusted gross income for the 2021 tax year is $60,000 or less. You must be currently enrolled in the Real Estate Relief Program for the elderly and disabled -- oh, you must not be, repeat that, not be, currently enrolled in the Real Estate Relief Program for the elderly and disabled. Documentation, you will need to provide, applicant must provide a copy of the 2021 IRS Form 1040 for any adult relatives and/or co-owners residing in the home. If the applicant or any adult relatives or co-owners residing in the home are not required to file or have not yet filed the 2021 IRS 1040 tax return, further steps and supporting documents will be required. So apply online at charlottesville.gov/cor or in person by appointment at the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. Remember to bring income documentation for your household. Call 434-970-3160 for more information.
Thank you. Any other items, announcements? Okay. Are there any items for recognitions? Okay, so time for the consent agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you please read the consent agenda for us?
Consent Agenda, number two, minutes, June 21st, special meeting, July 18th, special meeting. Three, resolution, authorizing a refund of $8,132.19 to a taxpaying entity or business for business license tax paid in error for 2022, second reading. Four, resolution, approving settlement of disputed real estate assessment, Omni Hotel, second reading. Five, resolution, COVID homelessness emergency response program, community development block grant amendment, $250,816, second reading. Six, resolution, appropriating funds for the Virginia Department of Education Special Nutrition Program, Summer Food Service Program, $250,000, second reading. Seven, resolution, state criminal alien assistance program, SCAP, grant for $4,748, second reading. Eight, resolution, comprehensive signage plan for 920 East High Street, one reading.
Okay. We will now take public comment regarding items on the consent agenda that were just read by the clerk. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. In the Zoom webinar, you may select the raise hand option to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak on the consent agenda, you may press star nine. We'll alternate in-person and virtual speakers. And let me remind you, this is only to talk about the items that were just read on the consent agenda. It is, this is not the time for the broader community matters portion. That's to be coming later. So if you signed up ahead of time or want to speak about other matters on the agenda, that will, that will come later. Is there anybody in the council chamber who would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda? Seeing no one, is there anybody online who would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda?
Mayor Snook, I see no raised hands.
All right. Any further questions or comments from council? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda. Second?
Okay. Ms. Thomas, take the vote, please.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes. So the motion passes four to nothing to adopt the consent agenda. City manager report, Mr. Rogers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of items. This may take a little bit because I want to cover some, some ground from past council meetings where questions were raised. It is my pleasure to share with you that the Government Finance Officers Association, GFoa, has notified the city that we have, have a gang received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the FY '21 Annual Financial Report, ending June 30th, 2021. This is the 42nd consecutive year the city has been awarded this honor. This award acknowledges the dedication and professionalism of the city's financial management team, especially our comptroller and accounting staff. Congratulations to our finance team for a job well done. I also like to report that Charlottesville is ranked number 22 out of 2,300 cities as best places to live in the U.S. by Liveability Magazine. Only two cities in Virginia were rated, and Virginia Beach came in 43. The Office of Economic Development is excited to offer a fourth round of Building Resilience Among Charlottesville Entrepreneurs Brace Grant. This program is a matching reimbursable grant of up to $2,500 to help offset qualifying expenses incurred by city businesses. The business is required to provide a 30% match for the city's contribution. Applications required to be, will be accepted from August 15th at 9:00 a.m. to September 2nd at 5:00 p.m. Interested city businesses can learn more at the OED website. Also, on July 19th, the city closed on the purchase of a parking lot at 921 East Jefferson Street. The additional spaces will become a part of the city's public parking program and be available for monthly lease soon. Following the recent update to city council, the Office of Economic Development has issued a request for proposals for a qualified consulting team to develop a comprehensive economic development strategy plan to help guide the city's development activities for the next five years. The project is expected to commence in the fall. I attended the Rivana Water and Sewer Authority and the Rivana Solid Waste Authority board meetings. The highlights were a presentation of, on their cybersecurity preparation and report out on their strategic planning process. Both were very interesting, and we will be revisiting both aspects, cybersecurity and the strategic plan, from that model. The Committee for the Preservation and Maintenance and Security of the Downtown Mall convened last week to begin evaluating some of the longstanding issues on the mall, as shared by many of the business owners and residents. The committee will assess some immediate changes and hold discussions with business owners as we seek to plan for the 50th anniversary of the mall. We will present an update on actions to be taken over the next several months. The approach, as we approach the fifth anniversary of August 12th, questions have been raised about our readiness from a public safety standpoint. I have a statement that we've prepared that I'd like to read to the citizens and to you, and we will post it on the website. Members of the Charlottesville community, with the anniversary of the violent events of August 2017 approaching, I write to provide an update regarding the city of Charlottesville's safety and emergency preparedness efforts for the weekend of August 11th through 13th, 2022. There are no specific credible threats identified that the Charlottesville Police Department is currently following, and we constantly monitor. The Charlottesville Police Department is working with Team Pavilion as they are hosting a Friday after five event on August 12th. To ensure adequate coverage, CPD is maintaining a status of heightened situational awareness and monitoring chatter from intelligence sources to be prepared to increase available coverage downtown and in parks, which can be activated quickly in response to any pop-up emergencies that might occur. CPD is having ongoing communications with state and regional partners to prepare to quickly respond to any incidents that may occur. At this time, the city of Charlottesville will initiate the following street closure from 6 o'clock p.m., August 11th through 6:30 Sunday, August 15th. Heather Higher Way, 4th Street Southeast, from East Market Street to East Water Street will be closed. Public transit provided by Charlottesville Area Transit, and all buses will run on normal schedules. In addition, the city would like to ensure that every member of the community has access to the Community Mental Health Wellness Coalition's Behavioral Health Crisis phone number should they need assistance and support. Please dial 434-230-9704 to access the Regional Crisis Call Center. Further, members of our community can dial 434-227-0641 to connect with the Health Happens Here information and referral line to help find services that will best fit your needs. The safety and well-being of every member of the Charlottesville community remains our top priority. If at any time there develops a public safety concern, the city will provide an updated communication to the public. And as I said, we'll post that on our, on our webpage, too.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, the search for the police chief is underway. Polyhire is the recruitment consultant that is working with us on this project. Polyhire will establish a portal to access a survey that the community can use to give confidential feedback on the traits, experience, and experience residents would like to see in the next chief of police, and the issues they would like the next chief to address. Feedback from the survey will be used to develop the recruitment profile that will be used, that will be used to attract candidates, and to find who would more closely match what the community is looking for in a chief. The recruiter will submit five candidates to our internal committee to review. The committee will select two candidates to present to city council. After the council's input, the manager will make a selection, and council has final approval. The link for, to this survey has been posted on the city's webpage. It's active now, and we encourage people to, to go on. It will be active beginning now until August 15th. Polyhire will also initiate a series of focus groups with stakeholders throughout the city, and we will be providing them people to contact, and we are looking for people's input. To wrap this up, there was a question about employee salaries at the last meeting, and, and some actions that we are, we are taking. After consultation with the council, the city manager approved a pay plan for the police department that increases salaries for department personnel and make their salaries more competitive with surrounding agencies, to which we've lost a number of our officers. From the savings in the vacancies in the department, we were able to increase salaries without increasing the department budget. Tonight, through the recommended ARP allocation, we are proposing to increase the salaries of the fire department and the sheriff's department. We are also evaluating our ability to address the salary situation at Charlottesville Area Transportation as well, where we have a very serious situation with, in terms of vacancies there and, and losing employees to other surrounding agencies. But we're working on that and expect it to be resolved soon. We are also, as you know, engaged in a compensation study, which we will have at the end of the year, and that will address the remainder of the employees. And at the same time, as you know, we are, will be bringing to council on October 15th, a proposed ordinance for collective bargaining. And that, after public hearings and discussion with employees, you know, publicly, we will bring the ordinance to council for first reading at the first meeting in September, I think that's the sixth, and then the second meeting in September for the final ordinance. So we expect the process of collective bargaining to begin late fall. There was an issue raised about a number of employees that, in the police department, who were not present on August, on January 6th. I looked into this matter, and I discovered that there were, for January 5th, 35, 37 people absent. January 6th, there were 31 police officers after, absent, and on January 7th, 25. But they were mostly on schedule days off, regularly scheduled days off. And there is nothing that we see that raises any alarm. There's been no question raised about any of these members having used their day off to go, you know, participate in other activities that landed some people in jail. So that, there's nothing further to, to look at there. During the weekend, another question was raised about another employee. During the weekend of January 16th through 17th, CPD received information from a city official reporting that a CPD officer, they were wrong, responsible for information technology issues had been at the Capitol on January 6th. That was not correct. The city's assistant chief investigated the matter and determined that one city employee who was employed in the IT department had been in the Capitol on January 6th. The assistant chief reported his findings to the city manager at the time and the chief of police on January 20th. There were no city records available for me to review, other than the, the assistant chief's report of his conversation with the employee. I have located an email showing that CPD notified the FBI in Richmond about this employee on about January 21st. I've spoken with the employee, who's never been charged with any criminal offense. He has been interviewed by the FBI three times over the past year and a half. The employee reports that no further contact from the FBI. The employee has not been charged with any action stemming from his presence at the Capitol on January 6th. It's reported that more than 800 people who attended the rally and entered the Capitol on January 6th, January 6th have been arrested and charged. 80 of them have been, to date, have been convicted. In this group are individuals who are pictured and filmed by themselves and others engaging in destructive acts or being disruptive. The arrests stem from their criminal activity, not merely their presence in the Capitol. The employee in question admits he attended the event at the Capitol. He posted his presence on social media page. He shared this information with the FBI, and he was not arrested. And as I pointed, I tried to reach the FBI, and the agent has, has retired. So at this point, having looked at all of these, these factors, I, and the employee having provided a letter of apology, which I, to the city manager, which I will not share, he is very sorrowful of, of his activities. He's experienced a great deal of personal loss, and considering the totality of circumstances, including that it's been a year and a half without any action, I conclude that no further action or review is warranted in this case. And I hope this, this settles this matter. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. It's now time for Community Matters. We have four pre-registered speakers, leaving 12 slots for additional speakers on Community Matters. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. There will be an additional public comment section at the end of the meeting. We're now going to open the floor to the pre-registered speakers. I say there are four of them. Others wishing to speak may select the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak during Community Matters, you may press star nine. In-person attendees may raise your hands to be recognized, and we'll alternate you with virtual speakers. Is our first online speaker available?
Mayor Snook, I do not see Tamika Durett on Zoom. Is she by chance in the room?
Tamika Durett here? No, Tamika Durett is not here.
Okay, our second speaker in Zoom, I do see, Corfara Humes.
Ms. Humes?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Hey, you've got three minutes.
Okay. I'm Corfara Humes, and I'm speaking on behalf of the people that voted you all in office. I believe that the engagement of the comprehensive plan is what would benefit Charlottesville. Having the comprehensive plan would provide the city with affordable housing. We would be able to create triplexes, duplexes, stacked townhomes, make more room for rental spaces instead of the one-on-one lot, one house on one lot, excuse me, which makes sense because Charlottesville is growing. And with growing comes poverty, homelessness, and uneducated children, who are our future. I'm asking you to hold the developers accountable, as well as the city. Developers intentionally change their minds with the dollar size increases their pockets. They go from creating affordable housing to creative, creating expensive housing. All a developer has to do is pay into the contingency funds, which seems to be a savings plan. But who is, who is being saved with these contingency funds, and who are you saving the funds for? It's clearly not the low income of the white, black, and brown people in Charlottesville. We would like to see that poverty line decrease. Mayor, you were the former defense attorney, and in your former role, which was the career, career path that you chose, you've locked up majority of the black, excuse me, more than enough of the black, brown, white, lower-income people. How do we know that we are able to trust you and that you will provide affordable housing for them? Charlottesville is filled with plantation land, and we're so intrigued with redeveloping the lower-income housing for the people in this area. And, and someone just stated that we're number two on the list, 22 on the list for the best places to live. Who's voting for this, and how is that affecting the lower-income people here in Charlottesville? Having the comprehensive plan enables more opportunities for lower-income families to develop futures for their families, and it provides stability, creating better education, and more jobs for the people. It also creates investments for Charlottesville. It helps bring together communities, creating family values. And that's, that's what I have to say for the engagement for the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Humes. Next on the agenda is, is Ms. Parker there?
Yes, she is on Zoom.
All right. Ms. Parker, you have three minutes.
Yes, hello. My name is Rosia Parker, and I have a couple of things I want to speak about. I would like to speak about these streets on Fifth and Dice and Seventh and Main Street, I mean, Seventh and Hardy Drive. A lot of these streets are very dangerous. They're two-way intersections, I mean, two-way, where people can drive, and that's dangerous because it's going to end up being serious accidents with other cars being presented on one side of the road, where you're going to have to go around to be able to drive. So I ask y'all to look at some of these side streets about, so we won't have a serious accident. I would really appreciate that. And then also, 2017, community members came together to create something that would make police accountable for the actions regarding police brutality dating back generations for black communities and public housing, as well as disadvantaged communities, coming from the DMC report, as well as the HEAT report, where the police abused the community J8 and by gassing them, A12 standing down. The People's Coalition created a resolution dated back December 2017, specially specifying, asking for public housing residents, as well as disadvantaged communities, to also be on the board. Then we also created a community forum to get community members involved in the process of creation of the community, I mean, the Police Civilian Review Board. Okay, and with that being said, I have been violated numerous of times. I've applied to this board, I don't know how many times. Gwendolyn Allen was chosen in 2020 to the board. She resigned, so I applied five times, being rejected for whatever reason, allowing the city council to violate the ordinance and bylaw, Section 2453, Board Membership, Appointment Terms and Appointment Process and Board Compensation 1. Also, they violated Community Engagement, Section 2465A, Community Outreach, B, Community Meetings, C, Included in Reports. So there has not been any meetings involved. I want to go back and say that y'all violated the laws by now allowing me to be on the PCRB, now PCOB, which y'all have completely violated, me not being on there, because we were supposed to have three public, two public housing residents and one from a and one from a disadvantaged community. I am a low-income public housing resident, in which I helped create the resolutions, which was specifically asked for two public housing residents and one disadvantaged community member. Well, as Bellamy Brown was applicant in twenty twenty, which was chosen to be on the board in the place of me, which did not come from a disadvantaged community nor a PCRB. So that is definitely violation. So y'all need to do something, or I will be coming with a lawsuit, because that is definitely violations. And I just gave you the sections to what you violated on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Our next speaker on Zoom is Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you are on with counsel.
Yes?
So I want to follow up by saying, Mr. Rogers says Charlottesville was on the list, looking at livability.com. Charlottesville median income is fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight. And your home value is four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. A four-hundred and four-hundred, four forty-five thousand-dollar house with a sixty-thousand-dollar salary. Not going to work at all. I don't know why you all decided last minute to do the raises. You should have did that from the beginning. It's unfair for certain departments to get increases and everyone not get increases. And I believe you only did that because you know I was aware of the person from Parks and Rec, who brought an issue to Mr. Rogers, and she was given back pay. So again, y'all be playing about the wrong stuff. I don't know why. And then number three, the safety plan, you didn't have one. You just went into your police department and got a list just last week of who was going to be off, who requested vacation, and who was going to be here and who wasn't going to be here for August the twelfth. This is unacceptable. And why it may not bother any of you on counsel that are not of color, doesn't make anybody else feel safe who was in those streets on August eleventh and twelfth, or July eighth, for that matter. The lack of transparency, Lloyd, because you're the mayor, the lack of transparency at this point is just ridiculous. Michael, you claim to have ran on being transparent and being open. You being a little secretive too. Same goes for you, Sina. Brian, you and Juan Diego, y'all knew. But understand, y'all been secretive about a lot of stuffs. I don't know if it's the little gag order y'all under or what, because you being sued left and right. But you don't have to be secretive to this community. The people who vote you in there. Elections are coming. You know that. I don't know why y'all choose to play with the very people who vote you in. It's disrespectful at this point, that you all just don't even care or bother to want to even deal with the community members. You don't respond to emails. You don't respond, anytime somebody write, I could write Sam, I could write counsel, I could write Mr. Rogers. Y'all don't even respond to emails. It's disrespectful at this point. Disrespectful.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. So we are now on to, that goes, has Ms. Duratt made a reappearance, Mr. Dillhund?
I do not see Tamika in the Zoom.
All right, so now we come to the in-person speakers. Is there anyone in person who would like to address counsel?
We were told that we should participate in number nine, which is the plastic.
Plastic bag tax, okay. You can participate now if you want to, but the plastic bag tax is actually the next item on the agenda, so I'll leave it to you. And for those who are not able to see what's going on, we're about to have a visit, we are having a visit from the Green Grannies. And I've told them they can do whatever they want to do for three minutes.
All right. We're the Green Grannies of Charlottesville. We have been singing in our community for over seven years. You could tell we are seniors and we are activists. We have been concerned about the environment from many, many years ago. And we are here today to support the five-cent tax on plastic bags. The county has already approved it. The plastic is all over. It's destroying our planet, and Charlottesville needs to do its part. The one part of the tax that we're a bit concerned about is that people who are struggling already financially, and maybe you guys could be a bit creative on how to assist that. But we're here to sing a tisket-a-tasket, a song for you.
A tisket, a casket. Bring your bags or basket. Plastic fits on everything, and what they do is drastic. Drastic, drastic. Plastics, they are romantic. Please reuse them at the store, because all bags are fantastic. Fantastic, fantastic. Don't pollute with plastic. Use fabric bags wherever you shop. I hate to sound bombastic. Bombastic, bombastic. Recycle bags of plastic. Keep them from the atmosphere, and we will be ecstatic. No plastic, no plastic. Let's stop using plastic. In supermarkets, stores, and homes. All creatures say fantastic.
Thank you so much.
We've entertained you.
Yes.
Now pass the tax.
Thank you. Do we have a speaker online who would like to be next?
Yes, Mayor Snook, Robin Hoffman is our next on Zoom. Robin, you are on with counsel.
Hello, everybody. I just want to make a couple announcements. CPA TV news segment. So Michael Payne is now has a Community Matters segment. It is aired on Wednesdays at seven PM on your CPA TV phone, which you can stream by going into the government website. It's so cool. You just press, tap on the stream part, and you see it live. And also, four PM on Fridays. He is amazing. He offers a whole bunch of information. And I just implore everybody to get on CPA TV. We hope that in October or so, we can have an opening and get everybody on board, so it will be our new Facebook. Then also the Botanical Gardens. I'm hoping that they will get on, the center will get on, and of course, all the climate action people, so that people will be informed, like up to date, what policies and all that. And also, I'm advocating for telemedicine for schools opening this semester. Telemedicine, I've actually written up a proposal. It was submitted in two thousand nine to Virginia Tia Campbell. I've been trying to get people interested. I will be going to the county and delivering that proposal to them. It will help the healthcare situation, the attendance situation, the COVID situation. And it's very cheap to do, because we have everything online, including the school nurses that are certified in the city and the county are doing a fabulous job getting all that information on the computer. So just a little bit of a tweaking, and then people can actually talk to people, trainers, Beck and Dickinson, and anything else resource-wise, including STDs, Planned Parenthood, all that stuff. Especially the kids in the high school. They don't want to talk to the counselors in-house. They want to be able to do it on telemedicine with a secured, encrypted, board-certified providers, instead of using their cellphone and getting some bad information. And the next thing is that the post office now is being tweaked. Thank goodness for Creed Deeds and Sally Hudson. They're looking into making sure that we have secure voting and everything else. And also, I just want to put a shout out to the Communications Department again, because we do have the state-of-the-art encrypted information site. And I do have one question is, how does an IT person who went to the January sixth attendance, how is he secure? I mean, he must have, you know, he wants to advocate for these people that are insurrectionists. There's no doubt about it, and he's on IT. We should know the name of this person, and we should also know that he should not be working in IT.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Because that's not secure.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else in person?
I'm bringing this. Mr. Rogers wants to know what we want in a new chief of police. This is what I want in a new chief of police. After five years, I finally got records of what happened to my son. And when I got these records, I had meetings with Chip Boils and Mooney, Lisa Robertson, Ashley, with lots of people, okay? When Mooney gave me these records, he told me I was going to be very upset when I seen these records. So I just want to quickly say, the first page is the complaint I filed on Officers Hickey and Pleasance. The second page is the decision letter that I received when I filed that complaint. The third one is the first statement that Officer Hickey made. Everything in this statement is perjury. Everything that he wrote in here, other than the supposed victim hitting my son, as my son said, everything in here, he perjured himself. I've been saying this from the beginning. Mr. Snook, I'd like to ask you a question, just looking at the third piece of paper that's there. The report from Hickey. How this does not mention one word about me being on the scene that night and witnessing every single thing they did to my son that night. Not one word of me being on this report. But in the decision letter, I'm in the decision letter saying that I heard and seen what I wanted to see and hear, and that I knew my son was uncooperative that night. Now, if I'm nowhere mentioned in this police report that I was there and witnessed everything that happened that night, how did I file a complaint on these police officers? There's another piece of paper, it's the next to the last piece of paper. It's from Region Ten. And I highlighted a part for you, and I'd just like for you all to just read this part that I highlighted for you, to let you see who those children were in danger of that night. Okay? This, right now, is waiting for the next chief of police yet again. Now, I've been told that nothing can be done. Why does it keep getting sent to the next chief of police if nothing can be done about this?
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else online?
Mayor Snook, Nancy Carpenter has her hand raised.
All right.
Nancy, you are on with counsel.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak tonight. I must say, I was surprised by hearing that there had been a conversation or a meeting last week among myriad people regarding the downtown mall and the celebration for what it is or what it isn't. I'm very concerned, because in attending the national conference this past week to end homelessness and reading a lot, there is a definite increase in the criminalization of being unsheltered in cities and towns and counties across this country. I'm hoping that you have the right people at the table that will maintain this focus as these business people and these other entities, maybe there's some government employees, I don't know, continue to have this conversation about what a proper celebration looks like for this community. Because as you know, the downtown mall is the living room of people who are unsheltered, and as such, they shouldn't be barred from their living room. A lot of times what happens when people are criminalized, they lose their papers. They lose their documents. You have no idea how damn hard it has been during this pandemic for people to get a picture ID, to get a social security guard, damn, to even get their birth certificate, when these sweeps and activities happen against people who are unsheltered. So I hope, like I said, you have the right people who are speaking and maintaining that focus, so that these folks don't get lost in the mix as you move forward with whatever activities are decided on. Because I do know that there is concern about the Friends of the Downtown Mall Group that has assumed or assumed the Downtown Business Association members as to, you know, where their hearts truly lie. And one last comment I'll make in reference to the report back by interim city manager, Mr. Rogers, is that someone who provided security for Alex Jones at a Stop the Steal event, someone who was a few seconds behind the breach into the Capitol in one of the entrances. You know, they can be sorrowful all they want to, but it doesn't change a leopard's spots, okay? So just saying that those folks that we understood five years ago that were coming into this community, we also understood that they were a part of, you know, the process. So thank you so much for this time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Is there anyone else in chambers here? Okay, is there anyone else online then?
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
Okay. So we will close the Community Matters portion. There will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting, and we'll now move on to the action items portion of the agenda. The first action item is the proposed plastic bag tax. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, sir. Good evening, counsel and members of the community. I'm going to give a brief revisit to the plastic bag tax ordinance that I introduced at the last meeting ahead of the public hearing, just in case any individuals who would choose to speak during the public hearing may not have been able to hear details of what's been proposed. The ordinance that is on, that is before you is set with the projected effective date of January one, twenty twenty-three. That causes it to be in alignment with the county's proposed tax as well. It's a five cents per disposable plastic bag levy that would be collected in the stores. It's collected by the individual retailers. Grocery stores, convenience stores, and pharmacies are the three retailers that are required to participate. It's very similar to their collection of retail sales and used collections that they would then remit to the state tax division, and the tax division would then audit and remit those funds back to the municipalities. We are providing, that our program would simply focus on providing reusable bags to SNAP and WIC recipients, which is one of four eligible uses provided in the state statute. to SNAP and WIC recipients, which is one of four eligible uses provided in the state statute. The other three eligible uses is education, to reduce environmental waste, mitigation to pollution and litter, and environmental cleanup. The reason for focusing on the first item is to, of course, make sure that there is no disparate impact to low-income households, and because we need to actually see what would be generated by the levying of the tax, it's best for us to focus there, to ensure that we're not creating a hardship on individual households before then moving to the climate action that can result from any additional funds that may be available. The work that's been done thus far has been at my hands to get this in alignment with the county, to get it in place so that it can go active January 1. The next steps for us would be, of course, after the public hearing and your vote this evening, if we were to pass this item, I would immediately submit the ordinance, the pass ordinance to the State Tax Commission. They will then certify that they are ready to begin receiving the tax collections from the city of Charlottesville retailers, and then we would be in the process to begin to receive those reimbursements from them. For what we have to do at this time is to simply just get ready for that process. We are doing additional research on bag types. As mentioned in the initial presentation, Councilman McGill referenced a request to consider bags on wheels, so that we could actually support the elderly and disabled individuals who may have a difficulty carrying bags, to see if we might be able to offer this intervention on their behalf. The statute does not state for sure if that is permissible, so we need to make sure that it is okay for us to go that far with the provision of a bag. But we hope to be able to prove that that is possible and to make those available as well. That is basically all that I have for you at this moment, of just giving a general overview as to where we stand. But with any additional suggestions from you, we'll fix that, and we could bring it back for the next meeting, or if you were to choose to approve this this evening, we would move forward and submit this to the state.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. So let us now open the public hearing. Of course, we've already had one comment on the topic from the Green Grannies. Are there other speakers, anybody online who would like to address us on this issue?
Mayor Snook, I see one raised hand at the moment. Michael Pillow will be our first speaker. You are on with counsel.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Michael Pillow. I'm with the Piedmont Group of the Sierra Club, and I'm a resident of Crozay, and I am speaking in favor of a disposable plastic bag tax. The Green Grannies are obviously a very tough act to follow, so I'll keep this short. And I do want to say, we appreciate the work that counsel, the mayor and counsel, Mr. Sanders and his staff have done to date. Just a few points. One is, unlike a lot of taxes, this tax, people have a choice. If they really need to use a plastic bag, the option to pay five cents per bag. But there are other choices, as the Green Grannies very nicely laid it out. Reusable bags, a basket, a backpack, a box, or like many stores already do, no bag at all, and just take your groceries out to the car in a cart. The, one of the concerns besides the effect on lower-income people, or probably a supplement, is the timing. The economic situation right now, maybe not ideal. I don't know when the situation will be ideal, but, you know, I think, as with many other things, it's time to get on with it. The pollution's not going to get any better with age. And as Martin Luther King once said, "The time is always right to do the right thing." So, not to minimize how every dollar or penny counts, but if someone uses 10 bags a week, that's 50 cents a week. Again, it can add up over time, but people have a choice. And reusable bags are available. The Sierra Club has distributed bags already at a couple of food pantries, at least one supermarket, and a couple of other locations, and we're willing to continue doing that. We can also help organize a redistribution, as a UVA student group did last year. There are a lot of extra bags available. In fact, that's one of the things we've noticed when we've done bag distributions. People say, "Look, I already have a trunk full, I just have to remember to take them out." So I think, as Mr. Sanders alluded to, we need continuing city and county coordination on communications, community involvement in bag donations, enlist businesses and other groups to help with that. And the Sierra Club, along with many other environmentally concerned citizens, stand ready to support you to implement the tax. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pillow. Anybody else out there?
There's one additional raised hand, Kirk Bowers.
All right.
Kirk, you're on with counsel.
Good evening. My name's Kirk Bowers. I'm a, I live in the Pantops area. I'm speaking as conservation chair of the Piedmont Group, Sierra Club, and to reinforce Mike Pillow, who is our Plastics Committee Chair. And we enthusiastically support the adoption of a plastic bag tax for Charlottesville. It's obvious there's substantial environmental damage caused by plastic bags. Plastic bags litter our land and waterways and harm aquatic life. It is predicted that by 2050, there will be more plastic in the oceans and fish if we don't stop using plastic bags. Plastic takes hundreds of years to decompose and break down into microplastics, which then pollute air, water, and soil and enter our food chain. Most humans already have a lot of microplastics in their systems. A bag tax can incentivize reduction of the use of plastic bags. The city will benefit from using revenue from the plastic bag tax, and they can use it for environmental cleanup, educational efforts about pollution reduction, and to provide reusable bags for federal aid recipients. What I've observed in local stores is clerks automatically hand out plastic bags. It's just instinctual and it's company store policy, unless you ask them not to give you a plastic bags. So I think this adoption, the adoption of this ordinance would help stores change their policy for distribution of bags. Consumers can simply avoid the tax by using reusable or paper bags. As Mike said, Sierra Club is already distributing pre-bags. We'd like to thank you for your consideration, and again, we support adoption of a plastic bag tax.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers.
And Nancy Carpenter also has a hand raised.
All right.
Nancy, you're back on with counsel.
Thank you. I do support this tax, but I did want to maybe make a point about connectivity. Perhaps Deputy City Manager Sanders could connect with Mr. Harrow at the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the homeless, because there are a lot of people that go from the street to housing that are not eligible for SNAP, that are not eligible for Medicaid for various reasons, and won't have that resource to be able to get those reusable bags. And there are also a lot of people who are unsheltered that purchase food items and don't have an access to reusable bags. So that if there's a connection that he could make to make it a little bit more bearable for some of the folks that are unsheltered or recently housed, I'd really appreciate that kind of connection.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
And Robin Hoffman has a hand raised.
All right.
Robin, you're back on with counsel.
Just want to also remind you that in Europe, they couldn't afford the oil that goes into the plastic bags, so they haven't had plastic bags, no plastic containers, no nothing in Europe since the 80s. We are very spoiled here, but also, we're kind of dumb, because we're actually feeding the fossil fuel industry. They made more money during this pandemic with their oil products and their plastic products. So if you really want to change the way commerce is going for, you know, all the things that you use in plastic, et cetera, boycott the plastic products and certainly bring in your bags. And even if it's a bag that's, you know, old or whatever, it doesn't matter. You know, that, it just adds so much to the climate that we don't have plastic, you know? And that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
Rosia Parker has a hand raised.
All right.
Rosia, you're back on with counsel.
I understand that they want this plastic bag tax, but also, I am a public housing resident, as well as a low-income resident. And if some of us don't receive money and just have SNAP benefits, that doesn't pay for plastic bags. And just recently, going into another part of Virginia, it's already the plastic bag tax. And if it hadn't been somebody loaning me that change, I wouldn't have been able to take out my items, because I didn't have a bag. So that puts us in a very detrimental situation, because, like I say, a lot of us don't even receive money, some of us just receive benefits. So that leaves us with having to drag our groceries out in a basket and having to put them in a car, which some of us may not have, or some of us may be riding a bus. So it makes it very hard for low-income people. And like Ms. Carpenter said, especially the homeless, you know, or houseless community, that's going to definitely be hard on them, because a lot of them also use these grocery bags to transport any items that they have, such as clothes, or blankets, or anything. So I think that y'all need to really take this in consideration, or make it a way that we're taken care of. Because, like I say, it's very hard for us. So I just hope that y'all make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Mayor Snook, there are no additional raised hands.
Okay, so with no further speakers, the public hearing is now closed. The matter rests with counsel. Is there any discussion before we turn to a motion? Or somebody who want to make a motion and then have a discussion? We can play it either way.
Well, I know we've been considering this for quite a while, and that also, we have been very concerned about making sure that those in our community who will be adversely affected due to income issues are looked out for. So I think it's really good that we have heard some areas, those in our community who still might need some of the free bags, but might not necessarily be receiving SNAP benefits, so that I'm hoping we will continue to work and team up with FAR and neighborhoods. And if people know of somebody who needs the free bags, we should hopefully have a phone line that they can call to request them, even if it's just our main phone line as it comes up. So I just want to throw that out there.
And one of the things that I think we need to think about in terms of how we're going to end up rolling this out is that there's a specific exemption for durable plastic bags. And by that, we mean bags that are designed, where they have handles that are manufactured, the intent with, it's for multiple reuse, they're at least four mils thick. And so there ought to be a way to have those sorts of bags be used and maybe get, use some of the funds that would be generated to purchase bags like that, and have those in stores, and so on. I mean, there are ways to do it, and certainly, it's something that people all around the country have figured out ways to do it. And I can't believe that we are stupider than they are. I should note, by the way, we have gotten a number of letters from people like lobbyists for Food Lion and so on, saying that if we do this, then people are going to end up using paper bags instead of plastic bags. And there are some legitimate concerns about that. For one thing, paper bags, to get the same number of paper bags into stores is a lot more weight, and it's a lot more gas and oil used to get the bags to the stores. But ultimately, our hope is that nobody needs bags, be they paper or plastic, that people will say, and I've said just personally, "I've got one of these great cloth reusable bags in my car, and I just need to have an incentive to remember to take it into the store with me." And the hope is that this tax would not raise a penny. We hope that everybody would change their behavior and stop using these sorts of plastic bags, in which case, we are a little bit closer to solving a problem. So I want to, I say that only because I want to acknowledge the fact that we have received some arguments against, and I at least have read those arguments and have thought about them, and not simply dismissed them as being, as coming from somebody with whom I disagree. But I think that there are legitimate points that can be made in response. And the main response has to be, if we're successful in changing behaviors, those points don't mean anything.
Yeah, and guessing, you know, guessing we know which way it'll go, but would just, you know, note that where they've been, they've been successful. I mean, in San Jose, looking into it, the numbers are 89% reduction in plastic bag pollution in storm drains, 60% in creeks and rivers. Use of reusable bags doubled, or more than doubled in average plastic bag, or bags in general use per trip went down significantly. So I think it is effective. I think the concerns about it being not as big a burden as other taxes we consider, but really, an annoyance to some community members, is true. And I'll defer to staff on the best way to set up that program to distribute bags to the community. But certainly, I know Counselor McGill has worked in homelessness services and social services. Is there any way we can help connect you with groups or provide any perspective on how to make sure there's as few gaps in doing that as possible? Just let us know. But with all that said, given the effectiveness of it and the reality of plastics pollution, I'm in support of it, and I would make a motion to support, to adopt ordinance to amend and reenact Chapter 30 of the Code of the City of Charlottesville to establish a new Article X1X Disposable Plastic Bag Tax.
And I'll definitely second it.
Is there other discussion?
No, I just would echo what has already been said. I think that this is, it's something that we can do here in Charlottesville. There's so many things that are outside of our control when it comes to the climate, and we're working on those as well. But this is something that's specific, tangible, and I think will make a difference in our community. And I also credit and grateful for the city manager's office. I think that they have thought about the unintended consequences and how we can manage those, particularly from an equity lens, but I think that this is the right thing to do, and I'm glad to vote for it.
All right. Ms. Thomas, call a vote.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes. So the motion passes four-nothing. Next item is a public hearing on a resolution for the American Rescue Plan Fund allocations. Mr. Rogers, would you like to present this for us?
Yes. So, mayor and counsel, at our last council meeting at the four o'clock hour, we made a presentation on our recommendations for the allocation of the remaining ARP dollars that we've received. As you recall, we received two tranches of funds, both for about $9.8 million, total amount being about $19 million. We have, there were allocations made, appropriations made in the course of the year, and there was amount remaining. For this resolution, we are proposing an allocation of $14,779, $565. And we laid out for you last week the categories, the items. This memorandum contains a fuller description of each of the categories that we are allocating the funds to, and even down to leaving an amount unallocated, as we pointed out, in anticipation of further needs in the course of the year. And if there are any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing, and let's first see if there are any people in the audience who would like to speak on the matter. I don't see any actual members of the public here in the building here. Actually, let me ask you, you're sitting there looking at us. Is there something you needed to add to all of this, Mr. Cullen? Okay. All right, so let's talk about a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the public who would like to speak on this matter?
Mayor Snook, I see no raised hands.
All right.
Sorry, now they're starting to pop up. Here we go. Nancy Carpenter is the first raised hand. Nancy, you're back on with counsel.
Thank you. Yeah, I did read the different proposals this afternoon as to how to spend the money. And I apologize, I don't have these actual requests in front of me, but I really think with that money and with the increased walking zones that a lot of young students will have when it's dark outside, because right now, we're starting school and it's light at both ends of the timeline, but that's not going to last very long. I think that a lot of this money ought to be put towards putting in sidewalks in those areas, even more so than what I think one request calls for. Because these littles will need, you know, every safety precaution when walking that they can possibly have. Because we know that when there's a snowstorm, the school will open, but the walking routes will suck. I mean, they don't need to be walking on ice or slipping on ice and slipping out into traffic lanes or even the bicycle lanes, whatever. So anything that can be done to perhaps, you know, decrease funds in one area, perhaps some of these, you know, law enforcement recruitment or retention bonuses or whatever might be a way to look at that. But I really think that, you know, in the area that this money ought to be used for the betterment and for the safety of residents here in the city. And those things that will go towards doing that should be paramount and those things not so much. Maybe that could be put back, you know, into that balance that interim city manager Rogers was talking about. I think a little under $2 million will be unappropriated at this time. But anything that helps with, you know, even purchasing some housing and somehow looking outside the box that way might be a way of using this money. At least we're not like some states and wanting to build jails with that money. But we have a chance to do some really fantastic things. And, you know, some of it looks like it'll benefit people, some of it not so much. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Kate Fraley is our next speaker on Zoom. Kate, you are on with counsel.
Hi, I'm just, this is a repeat of what I've said before is that I don't, it's not clear to me, like, who, what departments manage these funds once they are allocated? That's number one. Number two is really about how little information there is on some of it. So like, the number four one says, request number four, responding to the public health emergency, and then blah, blah, blah. Potential focus areas have been identified as homelessness supports, critical case management support, as well as mental health and wellness supports. It seems kind of vague, like, that's $500,000. So is there background information somewhere for us, for the public, to know exactly what this is going to be spent on? And how, or if it's not decided yet, is there a way the public can influence how those broad areas get the money? Like, or what creative ways those funds might be used in, within those broad areas? So I don't know if you can answer that question right now. Like, who's going to manage that one is the biggest question I have right now, or a detail question.
I don't know the answer to that. I'm not quite sure
Which one was she talking about?
How best to answer it?
I believe that's the Community Health Initiative.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
The $500,000. And as I understand, it's, at this point, it's not fully formulated as to exactly what that will be.
Right.
But knowing that we have increased issues with those who are not, who are falling through cracks in services, especially seeing people on the downtown mall. And this is, this is not trying to kick people off the downtown mall, but realizing that there's people on the downtown mall who are falling through cracks. And that was what I believe the community health outreach was about originally.
Right.
But whether that is the right, but I, is my understanding is this $500,000 could also be used potentially to, for that or Marcus Alert work or other
Right.
mental health or homeless community work that at this point in time isn't fully defined.
That's right. That's correct.
Okay.
So there's a reason why you may not understand exactly what's being proposed is because we haven't really fleshed it out.
Is there a way to influence how it gets fully pledged out?
Send me an email.
Okay.
We'd love to hear from you.
Best way, email the counsel@charlottesville.gov. It goes to all of us, goes to the city manager. Okay?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the thoughts. Anyone else?
Mayor Snook, there are no additional hands.
All right. So we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, issues, questions, discussion?
Yeah, so to the sort of last point that was raised, I know that Mr. Cullen has sort of overall oversight in terms of this portfolio of money and that it's being spent in accordance with the U.S. Treasury's requirements. And as we're on the hook to make sure that we're doing our fiduciary duty in terms of how this money is spent. And so I, if you wanted to say a word or two about that, Mr. Cullen, that would probably be helpful for the community.
Sure, thank you. You're correct. At the end of the day, the buck stops with me, so to speak, in terms of reporting to U.S. Treasury on a quarterly basis, the use of the city's funds. In terms of the more sort of nuts and bolts, for lack of a better term, depending on how those monies are being used, we either develop a funding agreement with the external agency that might be receiving funding, spelling out both the ARP requirements as well as the city requirements for that and having signed copies of that. And then in terms of staff members, the various subject matter experts that we have, who might be managing those funds, work to ensure that they have an understanding of the rules, the regulations, and the items that you have before you this evening and that you've received in the past, both with ARP money and CARES money, that's part of that process is ensuring, at least at first blush, that they do meet the various federal requirements associated with those funds. And we account for them separately. We have a separate grants account. Each project gets its own internal order, so we can track those things on a regular basis. And as I mentioned, we do follow quarterly reports as required by U.S. Treasury.
And Mr. Cullen, it's my understanding that the ARPA funds are also much more restricted and strict as to what they, than the CARES money was. Especially for what the recipients of the money have to be declaring and have to be following federal guidelines.
Correct. It's, ARP funds are more permissive in the broader spectrum of what they can be used. But you are correct in terms of then the requirements of folks who might be receiving them. There are more rigorous reporting requirements, more, I would say, on the back end than perhaps with the CARES funds. CARES were a bit more rigorous on the front end. ARP's a little bit more permissive. But there are still reporting requirements associated with these funds.
And maybe this is something that's already in place. Would it be appropriate and/or straightforward enough to do for your office or the city manager's office to update us sort of on the drawdown of these funds quarterly? Maybe that's something you already do. I mean, even just a report would be helpful.
Sure, so I can actually report to you as of last Friday, when our last quarterly report was due to U.S. Treasury, we've, of the approximately, I believe it's four, $4.8 million that counsel has appropriated already, we've spent about $3 million of that to date. And I can provide a more detailed breakdown of how those funds have been spent.
Yeah, I think a quarterly sort of update would certainly help me.
Yep.
In terms of implementation of these projects, the one that was raised, it's a human service issue that would fall under Deputy City Manager Ashley Marshall in the Human Services and Social Services Department. And each of these projects, they fall along the lines of the two deputies in the departments that they oversee.
Right.
I do notice that we have one or two items in here that will need to be continuously supported in future budgets. That this is just, you know, this is one-time money and we're talking about putting in support that will need continuous support. So I just wanted to make sure we are aware of that.
There are a couple personnel items that we're adding at this time that we will have to make room for in future budgets, yes.
And I also noticed that the strategic, I believe our last, last report was to, $400,000 was their request for a strategic initiative, I thought? Strategic planning?
The, that was the initial thought. And as some other items, you know, came along, we did some reallocation. I think we can get it done for about $200,000, yes.
That's lovely, thank you.
One question, I mean, maybe it's different for each different pile money, but for all the unallocated money, you know, the strategic investment fund, agency investment fund, the larger unallocated pool, the COVID contingency fund, if that's not ended up being used, is there a rough sense of the timeline of when decisions would be made about how that money is allocated? Is that going to be something that staff is going to be coming to counsel with recommendations for how to spend? And just generally, what are you expecting that timeline and process to be?
Yeah, I think that with the COVID reserve, we just have to see how things go. You know, as time demands, you know, given the situation in town. With respect to the strategic investments, yes, we'll come back. When there's a project identified, you know, we'll have to come back to counsel for further consideration.
Okay. And?
Oh, I was just going to build on that. So with the potential of the COVID contingency fund, if we find that our pathways funding is just not holding up for our community need, could we, I mean, could we dip into that COVID contingency fund for that?
Nothing prevents us from doing so.
And my only other thought, you know, I should, I think there's a lot of really good, important investments in housing, homelessness, community services. There are still two, I'm unsure of, not particularly the Meadow Creek Trail and the CACV-B investment. Not that those investments don't have any value, but just given that there's a limited pool of money, the cost-benefit analysis of those investment versus other alternatives for impacts created by COVID-19. I'm not sure I fully understand or agree with that those would be the best use of these funds compared to other potential uses, either incentive pay or getting a head start on dealing with wage compression issues with bus drivers, housing or homelessness supports, gun violence prevention, I mean, just a whole host of other possible investments that we're still dealing with from the pandemic. Like with the CACV-B, I'm just not sure I understand what measurable benefit for even small businesses that has. Is that going to help any businesses who are struggling compared to even just spending that money directly on brace grants to small businesses? So again, overall, I think there's a lot of really good stuff. I'm just a little unsure how particularly those two would come out in a cost-benefit analysis.
We'll have some further discussion on that. Your concern is noted.
Other thoughts? I would just offer the thought that this is a way of, this particular allocation that has been recommended, I think allocates some funds to a lot of different categories, all of which are basically good investments, good categories. And in some cases, we actually made a little bit of a trade-off in terms of things we could put money in from here as opposed to the end-of-the-year surplus or something like that. So I think we have to kind of keep in mind that it's a package deal for what the city is spending its money on. And if we did not spend, just as an example, if we didn't spend the money on the Meadow Creek Trail, we would, I think that that money had originally been thought of as perhaps coming out of the end-of-the-year surplus. And so this, I'm not sure that it makes a lot of difference which category it comes out of. I will say this, one thing that concerns me is, and it's not a reason to vote no, but it's a reason to ask for some greater degree of clarity. Looking at the $1 million strategic investment fund, I have not been, I've been complaining for almost three years now about the so-called strategic investment fund that city council is supposed to have. It's roughly $200,000 or has been roughly $200,000. And in many cases, has been used for things that were neither strategic nor investments, but seemed to be sort of a council slush fund, if you will. It seemed like a nice idea. Here's, where else can we find a pot of money? I know, let's use the strategic investment fund or a strategic initiative, I guess, is what the account was called. I would hope that we would get some sense of what we mean by a strategic investment fund. What kinds, it says, would be set aside to help the city quickly respond to unique opportunities having strategic value. I think I may have some sense of what kinds of things that might mean, but historically, I don't know that a majority of counsel would have shared my view.
Question, this specific strategic investment, is this distinct from the sort of council strategic investment? I thought this had to do with SEDA, with the EDA. I think it's different.
Think economic development opportunities. That's what we were looking at. An investment that, investing in it could yield greater revenue, you know, to the city long-term. You know, a million dollars, you know, it's not a lot, but it's a start. You know, my first cut on that was much higher. But we backed off of that but thought we should make a statement that something should go toward positioning us to take advantage of opportunities to acquire land or a building, you know, for housing or whatever. Things do come up.
Park and ride lot?
No parking lots.
No, I said park and ride lot.
So that's just...
We're not assuming future parking lots.
Distinct from the council strategic initiatives.
Right. My only point was going to be that I hope that we will all have a sense that the strategic investment fund will in fact be used for activities that are both strategic and investments.
Right.
And not merely, oh, there's that pot of money over there. I've got an idea.
Yeah.
Could I pose a question?
Sure.
So I'm wondering, Counselor Payne, are you one... So I'm wondering, Councilor Payne, are you wanting to pull those two items out of the, out of the list? Or are you just raising them sort of as general concerns? In other words, are you, I'm just trying to get a sense of how people are going to vote here.
I, I would pull them out in favor of other investments we've discussed, even about gun violence prevention and community services and just other investments related to COVID. Both CACV B and I may be alone on it, and I know Counselor Snook mentioned the Meadow Creek Trail as part of the allocation of any year-end surplus. I'm not at a point where I would say I would vote against that, but I'm in a place where I would really want to weigh it against what are other alternative investments to see. Again, what's the cost benefit analysis? Not that that has no value, but is it more value than what we're choosing not to invest in otherwise? And that's, I'm mainly coming from that perspective on those two items.
If I may, recall that the Convention and Visitors Bureau, seven hundred and fifty thousand, was matched by the county, you know, by, by agreement that both would put in that amount. And the county has already put in their amount. So if we, if we don't make our contribution, then one half of the agreement is not being fulfilled.
Is that a written agreement or a verbal agreement? I'm not familiar with it.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll provide you documentation on it.
All right.
So I guess, Mr. Mayor, is it possible for us to sort of, what is the word, line item veto?
Well, I mean, obviously.
I support the entire list. I can appreciate Counselor Payne's perspective, but I personally support the entire list. There's already two point five million dollars of other sorts of thing. Two point five million that's not allocated, which could go to other opportunities like Mr. Payne is suggesting if other ones come up. If we've got sort of a commitment to the county for this joint board, I feel strongly we should honor that. And, you know, I'm always going to plug for the Meadow Creek Parkway. We've been trying to do this for?
Meadow Creek Trail.
Meadow Creek Trail for fifty years supposedly, so.
And I believe, isn't the Meadow Creek Trail also, we had some troubles with children trying to cross over the stream to get to school?
It's all connected to that.
It's part of our safe route to schools concern as well, I know.
It's something that's been promised to the neighborhood for more, about twenty years.
Mr. Mickey would say fifty.
Well, and there's, I appreciate, but there's plenty of other things that have been promised for decades that also haven't happened, that we're also not investing in. But I do appreciate the point, and as I said, I think, I think overall it is good, but I'm going to nitpick, and that's what I nitpick on.
Okay. Well, at this point, of course, it's first reading only. We don't have to have a formal vote on any of it tonight. In fact, we can't have a formal vote on any of it tonight. And so the, and one of the things we had talked about was the fact that obviously Vice Mayor Wade is not here to offer his thoughts on the matter. And so if we continue it on to the second reading, two weeks hence, we will have the ability to have Vice Mayor Wade involved. And in the meantime, perhaps if there's some nitpicky things, we can, we can talk more with the City Manager's Office about how some of those issues might get resolved.
Yeah, and I think the point about the CACV B, just getting that documented would be helpful.
Yeah, and that's one of those things where we take it out of this pot of money, we take it out of that pot of money, but either way, we've got to get, we've got to do it. Anyway, so do we have an agreement to pass it on for the second reading at the next meeting and not put it on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Sounds like a plan.
I don't think it should go on the consent agenda.
So the next item is four fifteen Tenth Street rezoning. Mr. Huesca, I see you up on the camera. All yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. This is a rezoning ordinance to change the zoning of property located at four fifteen Tenth Street Northwest from R1S, which is currently zoned, to B2 commercial with proffers. Those proffers are assigned by the applicant and are in your packet. The effect of this zoning would be to add several additional uses available to the owners of the property. Those uses are art gallery, auditorium, private club, music hall, educational facility, technology-based business, and office. As we heard in our public hearing, this property is currently a church, a historic church. And, but it is zoned R1S, and church properties zoned R1S, if they are no longer being operated as churches, have very limited amounts of use. The applicant wants to preserve the building as it is and is asking for these additional uses as a means to do so. I am happy to answer any questions you have on the matter. And I know that the applicant, I believe, is in attendance in some manner and does have a brief presentation.
Just to be clear, is it, my understanding is that as it is right now, if it is not being used as a church, which it has not been for some period of time, then literally the only other thing it could be right now would be a single-family residence?
That is correct. R1S zoning is extremely limited in the number of uses. It's a low-density, single-family residential zoning. There are, I think somebody could go through the ordinance and find maybe a few potential uses that you don't see very frequently in any R1S zone. But for all intents and purposes, R1S is intended to be single-family residential. Houses of worship are allowed throughout the city. But we do have these situations where, you know, a church potentially comes up and is no longer viable as a church, no longer has, you know, church attendance is declining in the country. And so there are these properties that are coming up. And in a lot of cases, their zoning prohibits kind of any reuse of those buildings as they are.
So when this came up through the Planning Commission the first time, and I'm not sure I remember clearly some of the back and forth, but when it was, when they, basically the applicant came back and said, well, let's go ahead and make it a historic property as well. What was the practical effect of that additional change?
The, if you'll recall, at the original meeting, when this was heard, staff raised the point that while there seemed to be, for all, the applicant's intent seemed to be to preserve the project, the property as it was, there was no legal ability for the city to require that the building stay as is. And so there was kind of the, you know, admittedly outside chance that an owner could get this rezoning and then at some point in the future demolish the church on the property and use it for one of these other uses that they were asking for. So the applicant and the city staff assisting that applicant deferred for a meeting so that they could bring forward an additional item that is actually next on your agenda that designates the property as an individually protected property. I'll probably defer to Jeff Werner on that because he's the specialist on what that entails. But it does offer the protection that staff kind of noted in that original meeting as being of concern in conjunction with this rezoning.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Huesca before, I guess the next thing would be to hear from the applicant, unless anybody's got any questions for Brian right now. Okay.
No.
So do we have the applicant on? Hello? Mr. Dillhund, do we, do we have anybody trying to get on to join us?
I see one raised hand. Is Joe Reg, the applicant?
He is.
Okay, so let's hear from him.
And I'm promoting Joe to panelist now, so it'll take just one second.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Sorry about all that. Uh, let me see. I can share my presentation. If not, I can just kind of give you all the, the readout on that. All right. Sorry, I got two things popping up here at once. Background on this property, the Old Trinity Church is located on Tenth Street Northwest and Grady Avenue. It was originally relocated to its current location in the spring of nineteen thirty-seven. Originally, it was in Palmyra, Virginia. It was relocated to this location by the Charlottesville Episcopal Congregation and has been set in this location since then. The property also has deep roots within the community over the course of its residency here in the Charlottesville area. It's been known as a place of worship. It's been a school, a daycare, an outreach ministry, and a location for community gatherings. In twenty eighteen, the current property was acquired by its current owner, Derry Holdings LLC. At the time, the church was no longer in service as a congregation. Its last congregation had actually decided to move away from this current location. I believe at the time, they had started to outgrow the size of the church. Several of the community members approached the owner and asked them to revitalize this vacant, vacant property as a community center. In twenty twenty, we went ahead with some maintenance items with the church, mostly regazing the glass exterior, removing some vines that had started to grow up on the house. We updated the inside mostly with new lighting fixtures, HVAC. Most of your plumbing systems, we also made the interior of the building ADA compliant so that the parish house and the church were connected with ADA access. That's mostly what we had completed throughout our construction process. The current zoning is, as Mr. Huesca told everyone, it is a R1S, which prohibits the space from being utilized for weddings or any type of community event unless we actually have a church congregation in the building. Our hope is to move to a forward with a B2 zoning. Mostly, this is so that we can be able to implement community gatherings within the Tenth and Page neighborhood, as well as the Rose Hill and surrounding neighborhoods such as Venable. Mostly what we're looking to be able to hold are neighborhood meetings, weddings, social gatherings, local art displays, utilize it as an auditorium or a music hall, even as a house of worship if it's so desired by the community. With what we're trying to do, we're willing to proffer any additional residential uses in the excess of one dwelling unit per acre that currently exists on the property. That's the home that is now located there. As I've said, we, we're going to waive all non-residential uses allowed under the B2 zoning other than art gallery, auditorium, house of worship, music hall, educational facilities, technology-based businesses and offices shall be permitted on the prop, the premises. Basically, what our hope is here is that whatever the, the overall community decides they need to utilize this space, we want to fit that mold, however we can see the possibility of doing so. We're also proffering out no additional vehicle or ingress and egress to the subject property, as well as designating this property as an individually protected property. Any questions that you all may have? I know Mr. Huesca has already kind of given a nice lay down on basically what we're looking here, but I'm happy to opine on anything else that you all may have.
Well, some of the questions I have actually come to, so I, I lived in that neighborhood for sixteen years. And one of the big concerns is, will the neighbors who utilized that church for their lives growing up be able to afford to rent that church as a space?
Yes, ma'am. Our intent is to hope that this is able to be utilized by the entire community. The owners and those that I represent have been more than willing to save and do what they can for the community. We, we look at these things on a case-by-case basis, and whatever we can do to help support the community, we're definitely willing to do so.
There has been some proposals to assure that at least, you know, an amount could be a sliding scale for community members. We understand that obviously the developers are not nonprofits. Developers are in, in this because it comes down to their bottom line and they're investors. But I am also curious what assurances the neighborhood could have because the neighborhood's already had a little bit of pushback when they felt that there was going to be some more affordable housing that actually took place with the dairy market itself. I do know that the dairy market has been great about providing a free place for the Neighborhood Association. I have heard wonderful things about that, and that it's been very inviting and welcoming. But I just want to see if, what, if investors push in the future, is there anything that we can assure some residents that they'll still be able to use this space?
Yeah, I think the main reason we did all of this to this piece of property was not for a profit reason. It was to look at a location that means something to this community and to be able to bring it back to life so that it can be utilized in that facet. The intent is one hundred percent to do that. The reason why we're even going through this zoning process at this time is so that we can utilize this property, because since twenty twenty, we, it's literally been had to sit with nobody in it and not to be able to be utilized. You know, the community even approached us to do a lot of this work so that they could hold their meetings there. You could have gathering places, you know. We even talked in the initial aspects of, you know, what, what can we look at for, you know, just music hall or community upbringing, storytelling locations, that kind of thing. And we're going to do everything that we can to, to make that happen. We've always worked with this community and will continue to do so, especially with this church.
Most, most of my questions had been answered during the Planning Commission meeting when this was discussed. You already answered this at the Planning Commission meeting, but I forgot. What was the intended use behind the technology-based business use that would still be remaining?
So mostly, this would be looking more as like a co-working space, is what we're looking for typically. You know, with the way that modern technology is for a lot of the area, people need somewhere that they can jump on calls such as this and be able to converse with defined people. We want to be able to utilize that space if that's something that somebody in the neighborhood needs. They need a place that they can go that's quiet and reserved, that they can jump on and have or handle business. That this is the location that they can do that if they need to.
Thank you. Again, that's all I had. I think it was pretty thoroughly covered when I was at the Planning Commission meeting.
Other questions?
Just, I guess, a comment. So the point of the next item on the list, the IPP, I think it is, individually protected property, one of the reasons you all offered to do that was to sort of, as it were, tie your hands in the future to, to commit this property such that it would be available for, for the community. Is that, does that sound right, or am I mischaracterizing that?
That's correct. A, a large majority of the reason we all sent with the IPP was so that this property was going to be able to stay as a staple within the area that if somebody decided to, for any reason, make changes to the property, especially on the exterior, that they would have to go through another facet in order to do so. Uh, the architectural view board would be something that they would have to pine on to show them what their plan was for this church, if they were going to change any of the exterior facade in any way, shape or form and have them approve that. Uh, you know, we really wanted to make sure that we satisfied people's, uh, concerns with any chance that this property may, for any reason, be demolished or removed. Uh, in no way, shape or form is that the current owner's intent. So we just wanted to kind of reaffirm that and for future owners that this would not be a property that would change for any reason.
Yeah, and the only other thing I wanted to make is just an observation from my own experience. I guess this was two years ago. Somehow or another, I had the opportunity to walk through, uh, that site when it was being renovated. And, uh, that building was in really, really dire shape. And the amount of investment that your company has spent in, um, preserving frankly what was there and also in improving, I think, um, I, I think that the money that was spent was a good investment. And, um, I think, you know, at least from my perspective as a member of this community, I appreciate the fact that this asset was preserved. Um, it is an important place in Charlottesville. Its civil rights, uh, movement has important connections to that building. And so, uh, I'm glad that we still have it and that the owner spent the time and the money to preserve it, uh, not only for now, but for years to come, so. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or at this point for the applicant, then we can move to the public here? Or no, I guess we don't have a public hearing. Sorry, we already did that, so.
Do we have to do that for the IPP as well?
Yes.
That's a separate agenda item.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or feedback for council, from council? If not, is there agreement to move this to the August fifteenth agenda for a second reading? And would it be as a consent item or not as a consent item?
I'm good with consent.
As am I. I don't know how other, let's feel about.
I am, I, I think we've already discussed it to the extent that we want to.
So let's move it to the consent agenda for August fifteenth for the second reading. Now, the second piece to this is the IPP. Mr. Warner? Is Jeff Warner going to present this to us? Is Mr. Warner with us?
He was earlier.
Mayor Snook, I don't see him in the Zoom at the moment.
Well, okay.
I suppose, I suppose as the other NDS person on here, I can jump in as best I can. Uh, so this is our ordinance and if Jeff jumps in, he can take it over for me. Um, so this would be an ordinance designating the property as an individually protected property. Um, as you know, uh, this would designate it as a historic property within the city. We have a list of individually protected properties that are outside historic districts, but are, uh, by their nature individually protected. So this is just the companion ordinance with that.
Yep. Are there any questions or comments from council? Or should we, should we move this to the consent agenda as well for next meeting?
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Okay, is there agreement then to move it to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Huluska. Tell Mr. Warner you did your job great.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, a resolution of support for four TJ PDC and MPO grant applications. And this is Christine Jacobs and Ryan Mickles. Are Ms. Jacobs and Mr. Mickles with us?
Good evening, Mayor Snook and City Council. My name is Ryan Mickles and I'm with the Charlottesville Alba Marl MPO. I have with me Mr. Michael Barnes from the Virginia Department of Transportation to help answer questions. Uh, the MPO Policy Board approved the submittal of four round five smart scale applications. Uh, smart scale is a statewide program that distributes funding based on an evaluation of projects. Uh, the round five projects are primarily multimodal bicycle and pedestrian projects. Those projects are Avon Street multimodal from Druid Avenue to Avon Court. District Avenue at Hydraulic Road, Cedar Hill Road, a two-lane roundabout is proposed. Fifth Street multimodal improvements from Harris Road to the Holiday Inn site. Uh, sidewalks, shared use path. And the Vivana River Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge crossing at Willa Mills. Back in February of this year, the MPO held a public webinar on these projects. The most current sketches that you have, uh, um, or what you have are the most current sketches and some preliminary cost estimates. Uh, the final applications are, or were due today at one o'clock, at five o'clock, August first. Uh, we have submitted those projects and we're just looking for, uh, the council to support, uh, these projects. We do have the resolution from the county.
Okay, so is, any counselors have any clarifying questions?
Just one clarifying question. So for, for number two, the District Avenue Hydraulic Roundabout, I know I attended an in-person event for that broader scope of the project, but this is strictly that one roundabout correctly doesn't connect with any of the other, or directly relate to those other, the broader scope of the project?
Uh, no, sir, counselor. Uh, this, this project was, uh, uh, I believe initiated or, or birthed out of the Route Twenty-nine Hydraulic Road, uh, a study a few years ago. Uh, I do know that there are a, a set of improvements, um, that came out of that study. This is one of them.
Okay, so yeah, I guess I, I misspoke. It, it relates, but this is only that one piece of it, not other sections. Um, because there's just that broader project. It's, I'm going to vote to support this, but that broader project, I know we've heard from particularly one business owner of a hotel there who has a concern that it would cut off like all entry points into their business, including, um, any trucks delivering supplies. And just where in that process is there any opportunity to engage with that concern and issue?
Hi, yes, sir. Well, now would, would be the time. I know that I have, uh, Mr. Barnes and he may can speak specifically about that project.
Yeah, if I could weigh in, I, I think the ones you're talking about, Counselor Payne, you, you're talking about the other ones impacting hy- the hydraulic.
Right.
So like up at Whole Foods and then at the hotels and so forth?
Right, particularly the, the hotels.
I think that those have, we can let Mr. Barnes answer this, but I believe those are with VDOT at this point. They've already sort of passed through the scoring and are moving forward, but, Mr. Barnes?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Uh, it's Michael Barnes here. Yes, indeed, the, I guess all of them were part of the Hydraulic Twenty-nine process that was undertaken with the planning process, you know, about four, five years back. Uh, the funding for the ones you all referencing along Twenty-nine, the roundabout that's over at Hillsdale, are part of a separate smart scale project that's already funded, that's moving through the, uh, the bid. I mean, the design-build process currently. This one will be a new smart scale project and separate from the others. And it really, it is exclusively a roundabout right there at District Avenue, Cedar Hill, um, hydraulic intersection.
The, the reason I know a little bit is I asked the same questions about particularly the, the turn-in to the, uh, to the hotel.
Yeah, well, I guess it sounds like this piece isn't really even directly related to that, so.
I, I'd say it's, it's part of a larger system of improvements in the area, but, uh, from a more technical standpoint, yeah, one is one project that's moving forward, it's funded. This one would be a, a new project that would complement the, the broader array that was contemplated by the city in VDOT and the county four, five years back.
Yeah, the really great thing about this particular roundabout that I'm excited about is that it's going to give more access in and out of the meadows. So that north, northwestern part of the, really the northern part of the meadows is going to have a whole lot more, uh, freedom to get in and egress and ingress, uh, through Cedar Hill Road. Uh, and I think that's going to be really, really good for, for that part of our community, which is often feels like a little bit of an orphan out there.
Yeah, you can get there from here.
So you're looking for a motion here?
So we need a motion and a second.
Uh, I would move that these four projects, uh, submitted by TJ PDC to, uh, VDOT, I would move for their approval by council.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Ms. Thomas?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes. So that passes and passes four, nothing. Uh, next is the Sister Cities Commission Annual Report was provided to us in writing. Counselors have any feedback that you want to offer at this point?
No.
The, I will say the only thing that I, I, I'm a little unclear and maybe I was just not understanding the report well enough to know, I'm a little unclear about where we stand with Weywetanango. Um, so a positive rapport was established, but that doesn't sound like anything is happening yet. Does anybody know any, any more than that? Okay.
Some grand projects that have connected the two cities, but as far as formally, they still are considered a friendship city.
Not yet.
It takes a, it's a three-year process to determine whether you want to move forward as an official sister city.
Is there, is there a next step that we have to take or is it in the balls in somebody else's court?
I think it would be up to the Sister Cities Commission to present to you their findings and then you can decide at that point.
All right. Okay. Any other questions or comments about the, about the report? I may touch base with Damon Erby and find out what they think is going to happen next with, uh, Weywetanango. Okay, are there any other business items for consideration? Nothing else on the agenda? Counselors, any questions for the city management to follow up on? I appreciate the follow-up that you gave us on a couple of matters from, from last month. Uh, that was helpful.
Um, I, I did want to add one thing, if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
A few weeks ago, I, I received an email about a wreck that occurred, uh, at the corner, near the corner of Trail Ridge and Shamrock. Um, I'm sure Mr. Sanders is already hard at work on trying to find a resolution to this on, among the other things, many other things on his plate. But I just wanted to mention it because, um, you know, like a lot of things, it depends on who you know and the connection you might have. A number of friends of mine live in this, in this neighborhood, some people I go to church with, and they were just describing to me the other night, um, the other morning, um, the impact of this. A person was driving sixty miles an hour or something. Now, we have got that number wrong. A person was driving far too fast, hit a car, um, that was parked, which went across the sidewalk. A child was pinned under a car. Um, and so, you know, I'll be following up with Sam about, again, Sam's probably already working on it. But I just wanted to sort of put this out there for all of us and anyone that's listening at this late hour, um, in these neighborhoods, let's just try to drive a, a reasonable speed. Um, accidents can happen, people can lose control and we're really fortunate in this case that, uh, no one was seriously hurt.
Good. We will, uh, make sure we follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. I think a stop sign would be warranted.
So we are now at the final speaking opportunity for members of the public. Speakers, again, throughout the three minutes, you may join the speaker queue by selecting the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar or by pressing star nine if you have joined by phone or by raising your hand if you're here in the council chambers. And there's nobody here in council chambers, so that's easy. Um, is there anybody online who would like to speak to us, Mr. Dillahun?
Yes, Mayor Snook. Tanisha Hudson has her hand raised.
All right.
Tanisha, you are back on with counsel.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So, Mr. Rogers, I want to know, when did Allen Groh apologize to you? The exact date. Also, this may not concern any of you, but this is a major security risk for this city. Mr. Groh has access to Virginia State Police records, your local police, Charlottesville Police Department records, and many other things working in IT. He has access to numerous city data, whether you want to admit to it or not. This is kind of my field of work, so I definitely know what I'm talking about. This is a major security breach. He has the access to compromising your data and anything else. Michael, do you remember when the, uh, chat was compromised during a live meeting? I think I posted it on Facebook and you commented or said something. He had access to doing that. He was also convicted of a road rage incident in June of twenty twenty or July of twenty twenty, which involved an African-American female, which he was on probation at the time of the insurrection and was on two-year good behavior. So did you investigate that? Did you investigate his relationship with Mooney? Because Mooney was his character witness in court, which Mooney was also the captain for the police department, who worked closely with Chief Brackney. Was this man a part of compromising emails between Mayor Walker and Dr. Richardson when they were there? I mean, y'all spend so much time firing people for doing their jobs that even when stuff is right in front of your face, you don't even look to investigate that. Sam Sanders and Ashley Marshall, Michael C. Rogers. I don't see y'all going this hard for this white man the way y'all go for black leadership. That goes for you too, counsel, Mayor Snook. You in everything but a church sometimes. And you didn't think about this? And you sit in court and you fight cases all day? This is just so unacceptable in this city, the corruption that goes on. This was not this man-first rally that he attended. It wasn't. It wasn't. He's an open racist and people that work at the city of Charlottesville knows it. And you accept a measly apology? Did he leak any emails to Mike Wells? It, I mean, this can go so many different ways and y'all not even thinking about it like that. You know why? Because as long as it's a white male doing whatever they want to do in this city, you're absolutely okay with it. You're absolutely okay with white men doing dirt and then sliding by and landing on their feet every time. But as soon as it's somebody black, y'all ready to off with their head. This is not okay by far. It's not okay. And I will report it to the FBI. This is a security breach.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Robin Hoffman is next. Robin, you're back on with counsel.
Hi, I want to say that this is, first of all, thank you so much, Tanisha. Then the second thing I want to say is this is really a crucial time for people returning to school. Mental illness, there's a high suicide rate, especially right now. Um, telemedicine is amazing. Uh, Dr. Rubin, uh, Karen Rubin at, uh, UVA is asking you, city council, people in the public, to include telemedicine in schools. She put out a thing for a grant and all that kind of stuff. It is very inexpensive to do this. So what happens is if they're on Medicaid or they have no insurance at all, uh, the providers are in the telemedicine, uh, purview. Instead of them clicking on their phone, trying to figure out from Google search how they can get care for mental health and all that kind of important things that are happening now, uh, including food insecurities, that sort of thing. Telemedicine is all encompassing and it's already been accomplished in Kansas City. When I was in the public schools in Patterson, I was an advocate for the, anyway, so I came. When I was in the public schools in Patterson, I was an advocate for the, anyway, so I came up with a proposal that's very unique to the school system in Charlottesville and Almarve County, because I worked as a sub, a school nurse sub in both, in both capacities for a couple of years. So I know what the capability is. What I'm trying to say is, I'm giving you this, but also, if you need me to like, you know, show you the logistics of things, Willow Tree can do this for like, no money at all. We have so many IT people here now who can do AI and all that kind of stuff. It is incredible how cheap this could be to engineer, and this would afford a lot of kids' healthcare. I mean, you don't have to go through an insurance company for that, because you would have the school board-approved providers accessible through the internet, through the telemedicine system, which would be secured by the school board and the parents and everybody else. Anyway, I think I'm talking too much, but I just want to say, please look into telemedicine. Karen Rubin at UVA is asking you, at telemedicine, she's the cardiologist pediatric, but she's also the head of us, and she's asking you to tap into the grants there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
Ange Khan is up next, and you're on with counsel.
Hi, I'm calling in. I want, I want to voice concern about the increased number of tenants facing eviction at Mallside Forest Court Apartments in Almarve County, and also just across the city in general. My question is, is the city in discussion with Almarve County in providing eviction relief funds, such as like, prevention or whatever, through the pathways program? Because I believe what was reported was 162 units that are on, that have pay or quit notices, which are five-day notices, to pay a certain amount, ranging from various $1,000 up to $20,000. That's unacceptable. What that's going to do is increase the population of unhoused folks in our community. There already is only one shelter here, there's not an emergency shelter. Landlords have increased their rents, and eviction is a barrier to accessing housing. So I do have that question. My next concern is that the city employee who works in the ID, IT department is currently on your payroll, and you have no problem with that. It is an apology, and it's like, okay, yeah, okay, you can be a white supremacist that have access to all of the records that you want and do what with it as you may. That's unacceptable, like, that is just unacceptable. I've seen people get, lose jobs for being late three times in a row. This person was, this person was part of the January 6th insurrection, and it is just unbelievable. Well, not really, not really, because, you know, you all cover for each other a lot, but it still is unbelievable for some that this person is still on payroll, and you all are just okay with that. Like, yes, do you have, are you comfortable having white supremacists access your data? Knowing where your family lives? Knowing where you work? Knowing what your billing account information is? Right? That's not, that's not okay, that's not safe for the community as a whole. And you're talking about making plans and keeping the community safe for the fifth anniversary of A-11, A-12, January 8th, and the Summer of Hate. That's not okay, that's not safe. Safe isn't, safety is an increasing police presence. Safety is getting a white supremacist off your payroll. That's what safety is. They have access to all of your records, all of them. It's not safe, it's not safe.
Thank you, Ms. Khan.
Our next speaker is Nancy Carpenter. Nancy, you're back on with counsel.
Thank you, I'm going to do a little education right now. The National Low Income Housing Coalition just dropped their Out of Reach Annual Report about states in the country and what hourly rates should be in order to afford different things, and I'd like to drop a little bit of Virginia's information to you. Virginia ranks number 14 in this country as to the expensiveness of housing costs. In order for one person to afford a modest two-bedroom house or apartment, and I'm not talking granite countertops, or super cool stainless steel appliances, or drop lights, or any, or, or lu, or whatever kind of fancy flooring you want, it is now average in the state, $24.85 per hour to work 40 hours in order to afford a modest two-bedroom apartment. In our state, we have a little over 1 million households that are renters, and out of that 1,244,000 households are below 30% of AMI. That's 23% of our state renter households are poor and cannot afford the rents that are going on. One of the other things that I found interesting, that the state minimum wage is about $11 per hour, and for one person to work in order to afford a modest one-bedroom apartment, they'd have to work 78 hours per week. And the reason I bring up these facts is that I think that your city staff, whether they be the Economic Development Office, the Human Services Office, the Human Resources Office, your city manager staff, that they need to take some of these facts into account as you talk about this ARCA money, or as you talk about anything else that goes on that affects city residents. And one of the last facts, we have a lot of people that are on SSI in this city, so the average SSI income in this state is $841. And in order to not be cost burden, which is what this report looks at, that's what they're looking at, to not be cost burden, somebody on SSI could comfortably afford a housing option costing no more than $252 per month. So there's a lot that needs to be done. Developers aren't going to get us out of it only, nonprofits aren't going to get us out of it only, you know, the housing authority isn't going to get us out of it only, it's got to be a conjunction of all three, and in fact, the city may have to step in and actually purchase housing, construct housing, retrofit buildings, I don't know what it is, but this is, you know, I talked several years ago about an eviction tsunami. Right now, as some people have said that, you know, and you all know, you know, what the challenges are, but I just thought this report put it really succinctly and, you know, in, well, black and blue on my phone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Katrina Turner is up now. Katrina, you are on with counsel.
Hello, I'm back again. I just need to point out a few things in the little packet that I gave you all earlier tonight. I need for you all to know how many mistakes are in this report that Officer Hicks swore to. How many times did he call my son Timothy Carter? Timothy Carter? This is a report from an officer that has so many mistakes in it, just plain mistakes in it, that I don't even know how it was even accepted. And Mr. Snook, I'm just asking you, if you received this report, and you were my son's attorney, and you knew I was on the scene with my son that night, and I witnessed everything that went on, I even called the police because of everything that went on, why am I not in this police report? I mean, in Hicks' statement, I'm sorry, where am I at? Where did I come at in this report? Why is my son's name Timothy Carter in this report? Why did Mr. Carter get arrested for domestic assault instead of Timothy Porter? See, this is what I don't understand, how these chiefs of police claim that they reviewed these records, but they don't see anything that's wrong with this statement of Officer I'm telling you, I need to have a meeting. I have five recordings, as I said, Chip Boiles is in the recording, Mooney, Lisa Robertson, all of them know this information right here. They know, even Mooney admitted, this was not done correctly, and I have that on recording. The paper I gave you for Region 10, Mooney asked me, was that information available back then? Because that would have been very important to this case, and I told him, yes, but they used it against my son. So I really need for someone to contact me about this, because I also showed you a page about a polygraph test.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
So please, thank you.
Thank you.
Rosia Parker is back on with counsel.
Yes, good evening, I'm back again. I want to remind you of the PCRB again. I'm coming back from Section 243. This is board compensation. The board shall reflect the demographic diversity of City of Charlottesville. The board shall be composed of seven voting members and one non-voting member appointed by the city council. The members shall be removable by the city council for causes as specific specified in the Board Code of Ethics, violating the duty of confidentiality, failing to participate in required trainings, or other good cause. Bellamy Brown ran for city council in June 2019, also applied for the PCRB in December 2019, when he put in his application for the PCRB, was a chosen candidate in 2020, so he didn't resubmit an application and was chosen for personal reasons by Heather Hill. At time of appointment, you must live in the public housing neighborhood in a disadvantaged community at the time of appointment. Mr. Brown grew up in Venable Area, and his, and his interaction was not with Charlottesville Police, but Fairfax County. December 21st, I was the only applicant who applied for the position of the PCRB again. Mayor Walker told Lloyd Snook that it was a violation. So as it been a violation, and we are the people, as a community, created this PCRB to govern black and brown communities, especially the PH public housing in the disadvantaged communities. So with that being said, Lloyd, you are a person who made this PCRB yours. This is not the community's PCRB, or now PCOB. This is your PCOB. This is for men and women that are getting ready to come out to penitentiary now due to this new law that Lloyd Snook, you put majority of them behind bars. So with the government that we have, actually have put in the resolutions and the things that we took time to go to state, senate, and all of these things to be able to get these bills passed, that nobody on city council, nobody on the PCRB stood up or engaged themselves in learning really what it was, or worked hard to be able to accommodate the community about the PCRB. The People's Coalition did most of the work, but now y'all, as a city, are watering it down and making it seem like it's y'all's PCOB. And I see how y'all are not paying me no attention as a community member, but this really affects us black community members, because now with the different changes and what senate has put in, y'all are watering it down, so it really still doesn't serve our community. But like I said, as being a public housing resident, we specifically ask for two public housing residents and one disadvantaged community, and Bellamy Brown didn't come from neither one of those places. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
I see no additional raised hands, I guess a last call for folks on Zoom, you can click raise hand, or star nine if you're joining by phone. Joy Johnson, you are on with counsel.
All right, good evening. I will, in order that you have moved the church over to your consent agenda, I just want to give you a little history about what happens when you have developers come in our communities and promise things that they say will benefit us, and nobody from the city double checks. Now Dairy Central came into the 10th and Page neighborhood and promised a lot of things. West Devon is a part of the 10th and Page neighborhood. We're supposed to be able to utilize the dairy market. Also, we're supposed to have affordable housing that would be able to even serve folks. That didn't pan out the way it was supposed to be. You developers built a, those units on West Main Street and said the same thing about affordable housing. That didn't pan out either. And now that historic church, when they met with us, we talked about making it like a learning center, so that the community, the kids from the community could use it as a space where they could do homework and stuff like that. Now I'm hearing something totally, totally different that, well, the way he served it is multipurpose use. Who's going to check behind these developers once they come in and promise things, and then, when it's approved, they basically change what they want to change? Chris Henry and all of his goons came into the 10th and Page neighborhood, promised a lot, and it didn't pan out to be what he promised. Same thing is going to be with that church. The same thing is going to be with the church. Again, I know it's on your consent agenda, I'm Mr. Public Hearing, but I just want to say, it's the same thing, nothing has changed, nothing has changed about someone double-checking behind these developers when they come in and promise that things will be affordable for the community. I wanted to let you know, there's a lot of rental units, and, well, there's still some rental units in the 10th and Page neighborhood, and public housing is in 10th and Page neighborhood. We can't afford the Dairy Central, and I'm pretty sure we won't be able to rent that space once it's done. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Any additional speakers? Please click raise hand or star nine if you're joining by phone. Last call. Mayor Snook, there are no additional hands.
All right, so we will close Community Matters, and there's nothing left on our agenda except adjournment. So we're adjourned. See everybody in two weeks.